Alright, so we'll call the meeting to order at 6:30 and stand for the pledge.
The United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Alright, so the first part of our meeting is a public hearing for the Select Board to receive comments and concerns regards to the lighting options in the park. And we have Brian and Sylvia, if I get that right, from D&amp;K to do a presentation and then we can ask questions of them as we go forward. So Brian, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, I'm gonna try sharing my screen. Joe, you might need to maybe be the host?
Yeah. Hang on man, technology is...
You gotta go to those three dots and say "for."
First one?
Do you have to go to, you have to go to Brian and hit the dots and tell, and make him a co-host?
Oh, there you go. Make host. Truth is, he doesn't like to share. Name, name, make host, there you go, okay. Thank you, that was a team effort.
It's me.
Alright, I'll try now. There. Can everyone see the PDF?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for having us here tonight. Again, my name is Brian Breslin, also project manager. Also joined with me is Sylvia Miller, Senior Electrical Designer. We're here today to present some alternatives for the town's consideration. That would be, you know, concepts, costs, things like that. And then ultimately, at the end of this, or after this meeting, we would like the town to weigh in or make a decision on which alternatives they would like to advance. This project, or this project has been in the works for several years now. I believe a lighting concept was developed in 2016. And then additionally, there was a downtown streetscape improvement plan developed in 2019 by D&amp;K as well. And then following up with that, the town put in for a grant for this project, I believe, in 2020, and here we are. Sylvia, take it away.
Oh, this is my cue, I'm sorry. So my, yes, my name is Sylvia Miller. I work with Brian and I do lighting design. What we're looking at right here on this slide is our typical section of the proposed post-top fixture, although the rendering does not quite replicate what we're, you know, the type and style that we're looking at. But what we do want to focus on is throughout the park, there are walkways and/or trails, as it says here, that are approximately eight feet wide. It appears that the park is pretty level and has an abundance of existing trees. What we're showing here is the offset from the edge of the walkway to the concrete base of the decorative luminaire in the park would be approximately two feet off the edge of the walkway. And I think that this distance is an approximation and can be further, you know, defined as we move along with the project. Next. This slide represents the, a sample and/or example of a typical, what we describe as a post-top luminaire. It is decorative, historical in nature, and it has what's referred to as a roof or a top, which captures the uplight and reduces skyglow. So there are a multitude of these types of fixtures that are readily available on the market, and this one happens to be manufactured by Sternberg. The fixture also has a very decorative finial, and it would be mounted on a very decorative post. Again, all subject to review and approval by the town. As Brian alluded to just a few minutes ago, back in 2016, there was a rendering done, a photometry plan, if you will, of the park. And I believe a decorative-type style fixture was also modeled. So what we have today, Brian, if we could go next. We also have included in our design an alternate three, which we'll get to. But this fixture here is more of a contemporary style, full cutoff, nighttime-friendly, dark sky compliant fixture that we would propose to use. Again, this is an example of what a typical fixture would look like for the proposed park-and-ride area of the project. If that portion of the project moves forward, this would be the lighting fixture, or similar lighting fixture, that would be proposed for that area, specifically as a cost savings. If we were to propose the post-top decorative-style fixture, we would find that we would need, instead of a quantity of nine that we will be presenting, we probably need twice as many, just because of the distribution and the less efficient style of the decorative fixture versus this one here. This fixture, we're proposing that it would be mounted at 22 feet above finished grade, on a concrete base, et cetera. It's available in a whole host of wattages and finishes, and it's extremely versatile. So this would be the parking lot of light fixture. Next, Brian?
Sylvia, this is a shoebox style light, is that correct?
Yes, you could call it a shoebox style, although it differs from the typical shoebox style. The manufacturers have made everything very sleek and narrow and contemporary. So basically, it's a high-performance, full cutoff luminaire, and it's not only used for parking lots, it's used in all sorts of different applications. But for this project, it's specifically being presented as the parking lot area fixture. Yep, next. So here we have our photometry plan, our lighting analysis plan, the entire project site, which on this document reflects the alternate number one, which is the central park area that emanates from the center and has six spokes to it, which is, it's a lot of linear footage, folks. It's a beautiful park, but it requires a lot of fixtures to cover all of these different trails that lead from the center of the park. So the park area is our alternate number one. And the fixtures here, I don't know that you can see them at this scale, but they are numbered. So in the center of the park, on all of these little legs, we have 17 of the decorative style fixtures. The placement is what we consider staggered. So from left to right, you'll see that there is a fixture that begins on the left, above the sidewalk, on top of the sidewalk, if you will, and then the next fixture, fixture two, is on the other side of the sidewalk, et cetera. So that's a staggered layout for optimal spacing, aesthetics, and it helps avoid the existing trees. So when the layout was done, I did overlay the existing locations of the trees from the survey that was done. And having said that, if the town chooses to proceed with lighting the park, what D&amp;K would ask for from the contractor is we would ask for a detailed layout plan, just to confirm that our locations that would be presented in the field by the contractor are acceptable to the town before proceeding. You know, in this vein, I think I'd just like to mention one thing, and that's the pole height that we're presenting here. A cut sheet, a sample cut sheet was presented to me, and the overall fixture height on the cut sheet was 14 feet, three and a half inches high. And so the fixture would be mounted on a concrete base, and we would recommend that it would be tampered all the way around, and it would have a, you know, a smooth brushed finish for a really beautiful historical installation. We'd like the park to look, you know, as though these fixtures have been there for 100 years, and the historical nature of the fixture that was selected as an example would do a very nice job of doing that for the park area. So one of the attributes that we would want to keep is we want to keep what's referred to as a pedestrian scale height in the park, and this would help eliminate having to undercut or clear the branches from the beautiful existing trees that are now in the park. So this is a very close representation of what we could expect if alternate one was selected. So essentially, what we have for alternate one, which is the park lighting, is 17 decorative fixtures. I guess the last couple of things I would say about the park lighting layout, if we look at the notes below on the bottom of this slide five, page five, note one reads that the poles are all located approximately 90 feet on center with a staggered placement, and in doing so with a staggered placement, we'd like to avoid the existing trees and, you know, their roots, et cetera. And note number two, we are, we have, this lighting design is following the recommended illumination levels that V-Trans puts out. So for this park, the ISO foot candles are telling us, if we look at the legend, if we look at the blue circles, we're seeing that that represents the half a foot candle light level, and that's in keeping with the V-Trans recommendation for parks, specifically walkways that are, that do not but a right-of-way or and/or a roadway. And our minimum light level along these pathways are .2 foot candles minimum. So that's what's represented here. If we follow the ISO foot candle legend, the green outside contour is telling the observer that the .2 foot candles is what we're seeing in the green. So that essentially is the extent of the light spell that is measured at .2 foot candles. Moving on to alternate two, alternative two is the adjacent perimeter parking area, and we see that on the left-hand side of the sheet, and we see it at the top of the sheet. And what's reflected here are more of the historical decorative post-type fixtures. So on the left, to light the perimeter parking area, requires three of the decorative fixtures. And if we go to the top, we need another three fixtures at the top for aluminum, excuse me, the average foot candle measurement of half a foot candle in the perimeter parking area, which turns out to be the same as the walkways. So there would be a requirement of six there for the perimeter parking. If we move on to alternative three, we look to the right of the sheet, you see the park-and-ride outline, and I think what's important to note here is that Brian has two different options for the park-and-ride, so we selected one to model. And what we're looking at here is a total of nine shoebox-style fixtures to light the bus stop and to light the parking area.
Excuse me, are we supposed to be on slide five, or are you on slide 10? Because it doesn't look like they've been forwarding the presentation as you've been talking.
Yeah.
No, it's right there.
It's right there.
Or is it somewhere in the parking section?
Yeah.
Okay.
On the right, on the right.
When I'm looking at the alternative. What she's describing, it's on the other slides. We're getting in, but, okay. I think, I think it's, what I'm saying is, I think it's confusing, you're talking about alternative one, two, and three, and you're staying on the one that shows the whole one. Are the other pages helpful for just, what you're describing seems to be on the other pages.
Do you need me to advance the slides?
I'm having a hard time hearing the comments from the folks, from the town. Brian?
What, what the question?
I think we can move on to the next slide. Okay? And so this slide essentially represents the parking area lighting only. So what we're looking at here are the poles that would be proposed, their locations, and the underground conduits.
Sylvia, let me interrupt your, Sylvia, let me interrupt your, what page of the presentation are you on?
Six.
Six.
Oh, okay. But this is, you're still looking at the park, though, you're not looking at the parking area.
This is the park. This is just the park lighting that's showing you the, essentially the same, it's the same pole layout as we were just looking at with the photometry show. This layout here is showing the underground conduit from pole to pole, and it's also indicating a number of handholds that would be required in order to connect all of the lighting, essentially. Next, Brian? This, again, slide seven, is essentially highlighting the pole locations. They're a bit difficult to see at this small scale. So what we're indicating here by the red circles are essentially, this is where the poles are located. There's 17, and the mounting height of the poles is 14 feet. That's actually, it would be about 14, 14 and a half feet from tip to base. Okay, next. This plan here is only showing alternative number two, which are the two perimeter parking areas. And what we're seeing here are the six poles that would be required to adequately and evenly light up the parking areas along the perimeter of the park. You know, we'd need a couple of handholds and that sort of a thing, and haven't gone into a great detail here, except to show the locations and the spacing of the proposed locations of the decorative poles. Next, Brian? And again, same sort of an idea, we're showing these red circles to highlight the locations of the poles, to quantify that the requirement would be six, we would be specifying the decorative light poles, and the mounting height would be the same as the mounting height in the central park area. Next, Brian? This is our first slide and the introduction of the park-and-ride layout that Brian has done. I won't speak to the layout itself, but to, I think, just mention that although maybe a little difficult to see, the proposed nine poles are also shown on this image. I think we'll scoop by this one, Brian, and we'll go to the next slide. So here we are, same image, except we've placed red circles so that you could easily identify the locations of the poles. The poles are the shoebox style as a cost saving in the park-and-ride. The difference between the pole bases in the park and the perimeter parking, perhaps, is we would recommend these shoebox-style parking lot fixtures be mounted on two-foot-high concrete bases. Always better to hit a concrete base than to take out a pole as a cost savings to the town. I don't really think I have much to say here, except I would like to draw your attention to the reason the poles are located on the perimeter, along the perimeter of the park-and-ride parking, is A, they're less apt to be struck by a vehicle or trucks, and B, Brian will speak to the design of the garden that is going down the middle of the park-and-ride. So this design eliminates placing any poles in a low and/or wet area to aid in longevity of the installation. And we'll go to slide 12. And then this is where you would pick up, Brian?
This is a typical section that was cut for an angled parking lot. We have, we're going to be showing you two options, perpendicular and angled. We only are showing one section because not much is going to change between an angled parking and a perpendicular parking, just some dimensions. What you're seeing before you is, again, a section that was cut, and you're looking towards Main Street. To the left side of the page, you're seeing a five-foot concrete sidewalk. We're raising the grade slightly through that area, so we're going to need some regrading topsoil. Also in this area is the subbase, and we're calling for some curbing, and inside that curbing area would be some pavement that would be needed. The existing, or the dash line, as shown in this typical section, is existing. We are proposing to not do anything through certain segments of the park-and-ride. It would remain existing pavement and at grade. The existing pavement markings would get obliterated, removed by fine milling, and we would propose to put in new pavement markings through this area. As you reach the center of this park-and-ride, would be a bio-retention or a rain garden, typical practice or treatment. We are choosing to put in a swale to collect the rainwater. The existing topography drains towards the center anyways, towards the existing drainage infrastructure. On either side of this rain garden, we are proposing to do the same, in that being putting in curbing, subbase material, and some pavement. And then it's very similar on this side as well. We're proposing to leave the existing pavement as is, minus re-screping, and then rebuilding outside that area with curbing, grass strip that would vary in width, and then reconstructing a sidewalk. Okay, this is an existing rain garden that we believe we're proposing for this project. The photo on the left, I took at Trader Joe's in South Burlington, Vermont, up at Dorset Street. This represents what we're proposing. It has concrete curbing on either side. You'll notice in the picture that the concrete curb has tip downs at the pavement markings to allow water to enter this rain garden. There is, it's mulched through certain areas, and the bottom swale is grass. And the, you'll notice drainage structure in there, that is set above the finished grade of the swale, so that during larger storm events, if the practice cannot treat the storm water, the water will rise up and the catch basin will act as an overflow. We're proposing to use the same, the existing drainage for that purpose at the park-and-ride. And the photo on the, or the photo on the right is an example design that, of what we're proposing, it would consist of mulch, some type of soil filter bed, and then down below would be a under-drained four-s inch, six inch, something to that effect, and it would connect into the existing drainage to remove the storm water from the area. Okay, the two alternatives we are considering. This first one is angled parking. Because it's angled, we need to have one way of traffic flowing. So on the north section of this park-and-ride, we are proposing to have traffic flow from Main Street west to the town street here, and then on the southern section, we are proposing to have traffic flow from the town street to Main Street. The one exception to that is the gas station. It has existing parking in this area. In this area, we are proposing two-directional traffic flow to get the patrons from the gas station in and out. You'll observe that the orientation of the park-and-ride is skewed from the existing park-and-ride, and that is, again, to make the center island the low point, which is in line with the existing drainage structures. The other thing to point out is we are proposing to expand the, well, partially reduce the pavement in certain areas. In this area, can everyone see my mouse?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. We're proposing to remove pavement in certain areas where we don't need it anymore, and then expand in other areas. We're choosing to expand in this area. This dash line you see here is the existing edge of pavement. We're proposing to continue We're proposing to continue the angled parking all the way to Main Street, and then having sidewalk in open. To do that, though, there is the cannon monument that will have to get removed, reset elsewhere.
No.
No.
Why not?
No.
The veterans are.
We just move it 10 feet in.
Yeah, see, now the project is coming to North Main Street.
Well, don't be so.
You're doing great, Brian.
All right, Brian, I think you're...
Continuing on.
I think you asked some feedback.
There would be signage and then striping associated with this plan as well. There is, again, there's a five-inch concrete sidewalk with pavement crosswalks. There's handicap stalls here. One thing I wanted to point to you is the increase in total number of parking stalls. If I counted correctly, the existing is around 55, and we would be proposing 62 with this concept. One of the disadvantages to this concept is it does not accommodate a tractor-trailer very well. We modeled, we use a software program called AutoTurn, and it lets us use any vehicle, any type of vehicle, to model the turning movements and the wheel paths. You can see here that each, there's several movements, and each one represents, you know, the impacts associated with a WB600 turning. And I highlighted in red the impacts associated with this. You can see here that we need to widen or throw it out the intersection area here. You can see on the town street heading inwards, if a vehicle does head in that direction, the railway, the intersection would need to be widened in its potential to take, remove one parking stall here, potentially two. And then the worst case is heading south on Main Street, WB62, and taking a right turn in. As you can see, it's taking out one, two, three, four, four stalls right here in order to make the maneuver, and not try to impact the parking if cars were parked in the opposite angled stalls. So I guess one of the things that I would like for an action on the town is to reconfirm that whatever option you choose, you would still want a WB62 or a tractor-trailer making maneuvers through this, and whether we should accommodate that or not. So this is the second alternative that we considered. This is a perpendicular Park and Ride. The orientation of the rain garden or the bioretention is very similar in nature to the previous one. We're trying to hit the low point. This is where the landscaping would be trees, shrubs, perennials. Because it's a perpendicular crossing, or perpendicular stalls, the width between the stalls needs to get wider. So the previous angled one, you only need 12 feet. However, with this option, you need 24 feet. We are still proposing one way of traffic flow through each of these, through the north and the south. It is possible to have two ways through the north and the south in this option. However, it might be a little tight. The stalls on this scenario are 18 by 9. I believe the previous angled parking had, they were longer and potentially wider to accommodate the angle of the vehicle parking. Again, we're still proposing pavement markings, concrete sidewalk, curving, crosswalks. We are still proposing to expand into the park area to accommodate this, this option. In doing so, this option would still require to remove and reset that cannon. And then I believe we would need to remove and reset the bus shelter. I can see a little impact right here with the sidewalk.
How many parking spaces versus like when you have the diagonal, it's 55 to 62? What's this?
This is, yeah, this is what I wanted to point to with this one, is I believe we have 78 here.
Cool.
So, yeah, quite, you know, a good jump from the previous scenario. And then...
Just like to point out, though, that most trucks, pickup trucks nowadays, are more than 17 feet long.
I agree. I'm going to come aboard, or I think it's 22 feet, 20 something, you know?
Yes.
Sir? My pickup truck will not go through a nine-foot door.
If that's something you want to accommodate, or, you know, I don't think there'd be much change to this option if you wanted to make the stalls slightly longer.
Brian, we have a question.
I don't think it would affect much.
Brian, we have a question here.
My pickup truck will not go through a nine-foot door with mirrors. Nine foot. Nine foot wide.
I don't know if you can hear him?
I did. What's, does it have the, is it a normal truck, or is it a...
It's just a 1500 GMC pickup.
If that's the case, we can, one of the things we can do is reconsider and do 10-foot, 10-foot stalls. You might lose a couple spaces. But generally speaking, nine feet is a standardized, depending on the situation, eight feet, nine feet is a standardized parking stall width. So it's a question of what do you want to accommodate?
What are they today?
I do not know the answer to that. With this option, if you still wanted a tractor-trailer coming in through here because it's wider, again, 12 feet to 24 feet, there's a lot less of impacts. There's only slight modifications to the curving in the sidewalk areas that would need to get accommodated for this option.
Couldn't there just be signage that trucks had to come in one way from the Methodist Church, the west side, northwest side of the park, and loop around if they wanted to come out by Dunkin' Donuts?
I suppose you could. You could do most anything. It's just what does the town want to accommodate?
Wedged.
Yeah.
They'll get stuck.
Do you really need to have tractor-trailers go through there?
That was to deliver coffins.
What would be the purpose?
Coffins.
Coffins.
Well, donuts.
For what?
You could only get the little donuts now.
In a little coffin?
No, but that's what I was saying. If they could just loop the trailer the one way, and not bring them into the one between the park and them.
They could deliver donuts like they deliver gas.
Just a thought. Sorry, keep going.
Next, I just wanted to touch on grant funding. This is a breakdown of the grant that was accepted by V-Trans. Just the one thing to point out was the construction costs associated with this grant, the park lighting. We have approximately $131,000 for this aspect of the project. It is possible to shift funds within this if a certain task goes under the grant amount. For example, if the municipal project management dollars associated was reduced, those could get shifted into the construction aspect of it. And then this right here is just the same breakdown showing the grant funding for the Park and Ride area. Again, items, and one item to point out is the construction cost of $243,000 or so. So, next, we want to talk about costs and central cost opinions. For alternative A, which would be lighting the park, the park legs or the park walkway or the park path, we think it would be in the order of magnitude of $146,000. That represents a 10% contingency of $13,000 for this option. From a cost-per-light perspective, it's about $8,500 per light. If the town wanted to add six more lights for alternative B, we think it would be around $59,000. And on a cost-per-light basis, it's slightly more just because of the lack of inefficiencies, again, buying in volume. For alternative C, the nine shoebox-style lights in the Park and Ride area, if the town wanted to do, go with that, it would be approximately $86,000. Again, all three of these represent, have a 10% contingency in them. Next would be the conceptual costs for the Park and Ride. We believe, as shown on alternative 1 and alternative 2, it is in the magnitude of $300,000 or so. Again, this also includes a 10% contingency. The, as I've mentioned, we are proposing to obliterate the existing pavement markings and restryke the Park and Ride on existing pavement. If the town was to propose to pave the entire Park and Ride area, it would significantly increase costs. And additionally, it may not be reimbursable. We would need to get a determination from V-Trans on that, but it's most likely unknown. So I guess next is the V-Trans flow chart. I think previously, the last time I was in here, was the local concerns meeting. That's on the top row there. Right now, we are at the project alternative investigation and presentation. Again, to go forward, we would need feedback from the town on how to proceed with a preferred alternative, if there is one, in order to get into conceptual designs and plans. So I guess to summarize, we are hoping the town, either tonight or shortly after, potentially come up with selecting an alternative for the Park and Ride, the park lighting, and then... For number three, just wanted to reconfirm that the town wishes to have, you know, a tractor-trailer going through that area, and we can, you know, move the curving and sidewalk accordingly to accommodate. And then number four was traffic flow directions. We're currently proposing to show traffic flow in, you know, each alternative in certain ways. I would think that the, at a minimum, the gas station owner may have a strong urge as to which way the traffic is flowing, one way or not, for his or her patrons. And then similarly to the two residents that are on there, they may have a say in which way they would like the traffic flow. So with that, that's our presentation. See, you have any questions?
All right, questions for Brian? Or comments in general?
Who, if the construction costs are, as they anticipate, going to be more than what the originally anticipated construction, who picks up that difference? Do we have to go back for an update of the grant? Or are we picking up the difference?
I'm going to reach out to V-Trans to see if there's any supplemental funding. If not, some of the, if there is no supplemental funding, it would be on the town. And if we shift some pots of money around, there will be an increase on the Park and Ride by about 30,000. And that is, there's a grant match available as well as streets and sidewalk funding, if it comes to it.
Other questions?
Good.
Go ahead.
One question on the, when I, I'm looking at slide 11 when it's showing the nine shoebox for the Park and Ride, the lighting. And maybe a dumb question, but let me ask it anyway. We already have some lighting at that end, anyway, right? So you're saying replace existing lighting with nine poles? And I'm saying if we're worried about running over by 30,000, why are we replacing existing lighting? Is existing lighting good enough?
Yeah, I think this is just an option. The board can choose to do everything, or the board could choose to do nothing. So if there's a cost savings to do nothing with this particular item, then that's a choice.
Or minimal.
Yeah.
Because I was thinking in the outside lighting, there's already outside lighting. I thought what we were looking for is...
But the parking's different. So the lights might not work.
So what they're saying is when they go in and change it, you're going to take the light poles out?
I think that's why they broke it out. If you wanted to skip the Park and Ride altogether, you could.
No, I don't want to skip the Park and Ride.
No, the lighting.
I'm just looking and saying, the lighting, we're talking quite a bit of money for lighting, and I'm going, I thought we were doing lighting inside the park, putting a lot of money into lighting the exterior on the outside where we already have light poles and lighting already. Or is it not, is it not light enough?
You mean for the park or for the parking lot?
Outside, outside, where people park today.
Well, especially like here, you're saying, right?
Yeah, along here, where the Park and Ride is now.
It doesn't show where the existing lights are because I think the point is the parking isn't going to be the same as it is now. So the lights might be in the wrong places. It might be in the middle of a swath, a stall.
My only question was, do we have to go all-new lighting on the outside or the existing? We're not affecting, we're on the sides of the street, outside the park area. We're not affecting the lighting on the other three sides. But we are talking about putting lighting outside out there. And I'm going, okay, you're not affecting any poles out there. Why, is it not light enough?
What you need to do, and it might be something that Brian and Sophie could chime in on, or at least take a look at, they're showing you a photometric plot of the park, what that alternative would look like in the park. We don't know what we have for an existing photometric plot for the free market, and what difference this alternative would make on that. It'd be nice to have a baseline to start with, so you knew.
Right. Okay, good point.
And I think, I mean, if we look at the base, just base for in the park, you're looking at $146,000 in construction costs, and we only have $130,000. So I mean, those are going to, may have to be further. I mean, option two was $59,000, and option three was $86,000. So there's another 100-plus thousand to get those two other options, so...
And once again, on your second option, you don't know what you have to start with. You don't have a baseline. You know, in the park, you've got a target. You know what it's going to look like compared to what? No, you have nothing now. So it might be an idea to get a baseline level on that and say, okay, does it need to be improved? Or does it not? And if so, what is it going to take to improve what you already have?
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
About the Park and Ride. I guess I'm not really clear why... I guess I'm not really clear, why does that centerpiece dividing the two sides of the park and ride have to be a rain garden? Is that necessary for drainage? I'm looking at the plan, and that's a long stretch of parking spaces, and there's one crosswalk in the middle. So if you park, get a spot on the far side and you want to, you know, walk to the other side, what, that's kind of, so you can't walk across it if it's a rain garden? Do you have to go across that one crosswalk to get from one side of park and ride to the other? Does it have to be a rain garden?
Can you hear that, Brian?
Yeah, I guess I'll try to answer is, per the, per the, per the grant application, it specified a rain garden, so I, I don't think you can get away with this, doing something different and still get the federal funds associated with it. It is, it, there is going to be a shallow swale in the rain garden area, but it still is traversable for anyone who's, you know, other, other than wheelchair, people, people in wheelchairs. We did realize that it is a long way to travel east-west, so that's why we did propose to put in a mid-block crosswalk through this area. It's approaching 250 feet, if not more.
I guess I didn't realize there had to be a rain garden in there, because when we spoke about it a year and a half ago, when we started working it, two years ago when we started on this project, our initial thought was to have that be concrete or whatever through there, and then put perhaps four or five lights right down the center of the parking, and...
Get both sides.
And, and it takes care of both sides, and it's fewer lights.
Yeah, we've been talking about.
Because then they could walk down the middle.
The center of it.
The center of it, not have to walk in the street.
And there would virtually be no maintenance.
The town owns the park and ride and the town park. If you wanted to put a sidewalk on one side, running parallel, adjacent to the rain garden, I think you could, it just means you have, in, in order to keep the same amount of parking stalls, you have to shift things to the north, which may affect other, other things that would need to get removed and reset.
Other questions?
So, what they're saying is, our lights aren't going to match?
Yeah, that's what I heard.
Not in the park and ride area?
Yeah, because we had talked, when we talked about that, that was one of the things we sort of wanted, was it also look...
Uniform.
Uniform. You know, and, you know, even now, they were talking about putting lights down Main Street to have it, to have it look uniform.
I think the non-matching is, you would have to have a lot more than nine lights.
Right.
To go with the, the matching lights.
Well, that configuration, having the lights on the two sides.
As Sylvia mentioned this to me previously, it's, it's pretty cost prohibitive to be putting the decorative lights in the park and ride.
So it's partly budget, when you looked at the overall budget?
My, my only, my question's not, not really for the people who gave the presentation, but with the people in the room. I felt quite a bit of emotion, we talked about moving the cannon, and that park and ride, no matter which option, the cannon moves. Any further comments on that?
Well, first, how far is it moving?
Right.
What's your proposal?
And how much is it going to cost?
I, I think you could move it five to 10 feet to the north, and it would be outside the sidewalk limits.
That would be fine.
Okay, that's, looks like the head's nodding in here, saying that that sounds agreeable.
I think, if you can, you can actually kind of see this in the plan. It's, it's within the sidewalk limits, the sidewalk's five feet, so I think you can just block it outside there, 10 feet, you're probably good.
Okay. That's good, that's a good point.
And with respect to cost, I think we had assumed $1,000 or $2,000 to remove and reset it, something in that magnitude.
I have a question about the rain garden. There has to be one continuous strip? It couldn't be three small things? So you could have a walkway in between?
There is a walkway.
There is a walkway.
No, no.
We call it a too small, too small strip, because of the, because of the sidewalk in the middle?
Well, we're thinking if there was more than one way to get from one side of park and ride to the other, if there were more cut-throughs across those lanes, then it would make it easier to access. And, does the, I guess what we're saying is, does the rain garden have to be continuous?
I don't believe it does. I think if you wanted to have, add a second mid-block crossing, you could, you would shift, potentially shift the middle one, one way or the other, and kind of equally space them out. The one disadvantage is, you're probably losing a couple, few parking spots.
Well, how wide do you have that, that walkway now? Is that two parking spaces wide?
Looks like...
It's, it's what it looks like.
Approximately that.
Well, my guess.
Might lose like six parking spots total.
Well, except it's more like eight, because it's four rows.
Well, I'm just hoping that's very wide, it's two parking spaces wide for people to pass, I don't think we need...
Well, I think it's ADA at that point.
Yeah.
They need sightlines and everything.
Our standards, that's what I'm talking about.
Anybody else?
This is the only question I have to ask real quick in the park lighting. Is it possible to mix and match, you know, pull a lamp here, pull a lamp there? You know, just to whittle that cost down a little bit without, without getting away from standards that you have to have?
Yeah, make, use, have fewer lights in the park to cut down.
Sylvia, could you answer that question? Did you hear it?
You know, I've been having difficulty hearing.
Oh, I'm able...
The way I understood it was, a person asked a question if the, what would it, what would be the ramifications or implications if we started removing light poles from the park pathways as part of the proposed design? So as part of this option?
Right.
What would be the implications?
For instance, if you went, you might do 120 feet.
Think you got to meet the...
Right.
The implication would, the first one that comes to mind, we would not be meeting the minimum V-Trans recommendation in one walkway. Not really well-versed on funding and that sort of criteria if their recommendations are not met. I'm not quite sure what the outcome is of that.
That's a question.
I, I, I thought the same thing, if you're not meeting their requirements, I'm questioning what, what would happen?
I, I understand the, the, you know, the open-ended question, because I've, I've had the same considerations. You could potentially look at lighting the park in perhaps a different method, where you light, you, you keep the, the fixtures that are at the outside diameter, if you will, you know, the, the ones that are located at each entry, entrance point along each leg. So you keep, keep the outermost six fixtures as you come into the park, and then perhaps you could consider lighting the central area of the park and allowing the light to just emanate from there. It would, it, you know, without doing, running that photometry, I would say that the mid-span on each leg would fall to zero foot candles. So you, you'd end up with wayfinding light. If you didn't do the perimeter area parking, and you kept the fixtures at the, you know, entrance into the park at all six legs, that would, that would give you wayfinding, okay, here's, you know, here's the pathway into the park, and if you lit the center of the park, you probably could find your way through. But you would have to go through, you know, some dark, some darkness. So it, it really depends on if the town has issues with, you know, vandalism, or people not feeling safe in the park. You know, if you don't have either of those issues, it might not, it might not be, you know, a, a big hurdle. Although, I'm not sure, getting back to the funding, I'm not sure if there's any opportunity to light the park in a different way. I, I don't have the answer to that.
The whole concept of this park lighting was so that the people in the concert would be able to see the lead, the concerts, in a, in a lit park area, not with dark areas in between the lights.
And this proposal does that?
This, I mean, multiple uses, but they're looking for four things, like alternative one or alternative two. For the people that are at the meeting here, because we have quite a few, are you leaning towards, I, I mean, I'm looking, I just want to make sure, I'm checking that what I'm hearing it to say is true. It sounds like you're leaning towards alternative one, which is making sure that the lighting is, is showing like the one that's on the screen right now, that that's the, that's the alternative. Now, the only, when I look at the question of alternative two, is that this plus the outside lighting, or what, what am I?
Yeah, take us, just take us quickly through the funding, a little bit more.
Okay.
And, and what the town...
Alternative one, which I presented a little later slides, I'm showing slide seven here, this is $146,000 with a 10% contingency shown. Alternative two, which was six lights, was approximately $59,000.
And what do we have for grant dollars?
130.
130.
For construction.
For construction, not for lamps?
I'm, yeah, so just, option, let's just talk about alternative one. Is that fully funded, other than the town match? And what is the town match? Could we build that project? That's my question.
For sure, for $16,000.
Right, that's what I'm asking. So, I guess, why are we, that kind of knocks out option, alternative two for me.
Oh.
And alternative three, and any alternatives.
I have a question. Around the center of where the fountain is, there's a lot of light.
Yeah.
Does there have to be that money, many right around the fountain?
Tennessee, where two could perhaps be eliminated and things spread out a little bit, that's, there's a lot of lights there.
We're 10,000 short, so if you just pull one $8,500 fixture out, you're really close.
I would even take two. That's going to be like a, what, a giant...
There's a lot there.
What, you guys got any thoughts on that, foot candle wise?
I think two out.
Sylvia, did you hear the question?
No, I did not, I'm sorry.
Is it possible to pull two of those light poles out from the center of the park? There's concern that that's going to be way too much light right in the middle of that, that area.
It's, it's an interesting situation with these fixtures. They, you know, at 14 feet, or even 16 feet, which I modeled, you know, just to get a sense of what the distribution is, and if there's any difference. And where the issue comes in, if we look at the photometry really closely, we're down to, this is a maximum spacing of 90 feet on center, and even when you cross the, you know, the center of the spider, if you will, you know, the center of the park, the fixtures are all still located roughly, you know, a, a good, a good distance apart. If you go from one, one leg to the other, and you, and you cross that, that center axis there, they are all, they appear with the red circles as though, gee, they're really bunched up. But it's, it's a lot of pushing and pulling to not fall below that point two minimum horizontal distribution. These, you know, if the fixtures are even at 16 feet, it's still a bit of a stretch. We probably could pull, you know, as, as I look at this, it's, I'm just saying, even if the, the leg that's going north to south, that leg right there is really tough to do. Moving either one of those fixtures just a few feet up or down changes the dynamic of the light levels along the lockway. There's a lot of lights and a, and a lot of linear footage here, folks. You know, the, the design as it is right now just barely meets that minimum. So if you look at the, at the contours in between each little puddle, you'll see that, that the magenta color is point three foot candles. So, it's very, it's a very precarious thing. The only thing I can say is, this design meets that minimum, and it, and it meets it very conservative, conservatively, at, at every, at every turn. So when you eliminate a light, let's say we eliminate A1-4, the one that's closest to the middle of the, of the park. That fixture there, eliminating that light lowers, lowers the foot candles in the center of the park. So we're kind of left with a dark spot right in the middle. Is, is there a pagoda or something in the middle of the park that's being kept?
There's a fountain there.
Fountain.
Brian, was that a known?
No, there's a fountain.
He said it was a fountain.
There's a fountain.
Oh, fountain, okay.
And is the fountain lit?
So, that's right. Originally, I was hoping that that was the structure that I could eliminate, you know, I could put a fixture in there and, and make it such that I, I wouldn't need maybe that one pole, that A1-4 pole, or even, I think that's, yes, that's number four, I could essentially eliminate that by having a structure there that I could light. What's interesting is, I, I did another park, not this, not with all of these legs, but the fixture turned out to be half the wattage of these, but the mounting height was high. And the reason why I don't recommend a higher mounting height is because then the fixture gets caught... gets caught in the trees. And you, then you've really shot yourself in the foot, because all of that foliage is, you know, spring through, through the fall, really blocks a lot of this light. And so, when we're looking at this photography, it's important to remember that this is without any trees, this is like the perfect situation, to a degree, because we're not seeing the light spill that isn't spilling because of the trees, because of the foliage. So, you know, really at face value, this is an extremely conservative layout. You know, we could, we could go to point two, if we went to point two, it's pushing, it's pulling, it's possible that we, that we could save a fixture, maybe one fixture, it's possible. That, you know, you could, you could pull, pull six further away from seven and, and get right down there to that point two light level. The other thing that, that goes into these calculations that most people aren't aware of are light loss factors. And the light loss factor that is behind this design, as the foundation of the design, is things like lamp depreciation, dirt depreciation, because the fixtures will get dirty. The, the initial lumens will fade over time and the driver will actually weaken in the fixture over time. So those are data points that are built in when, when the site is modeled. And so, those light loss factors are factored in to this presentation. And at the same time, it's stretched. You know, having said that, there, there probably are a few, a few little things that you could do, you could raise, you could keep, you could keep the pole at this height, but you could raise the concrete base. Then again, you're in the, you're in the foliage and that can present problems. Again, this is the ultimate, you know, layout without having the extent of all of the existing trees shown. So I just, it's just a word of caution to say that this really is a minimalistic design where we're putting what is traditionally a very inefficient fixture, these traditional post tops, just by nature of their design are not efficient fixtures. And, you know, the best that we could hope for is to raise the height of the pole. I wouldn't want to increase the wattage, because if we were to really examine the light levels, you'd see that under each fixture is a hot, what's referred to as a hotspot. So, the, the walkway is going to be very bright underneath the fixture and then as we go out in each, each direction, forty-five feet, which is a considerable distance, the light dissipates rather quickly. You know, one of the things that could be considered, I don't, I don't know if anyone would consider this, but with a perimeter parking, the perimeter parking could be lit with the parking lot style fixture, which is more contemporary and is more efficient. It's possible that we could light the perimeter parking areas with perhaps two of the parking lot fixtures. And, you know, as a cost savings, if, if someone was concerned with having lighting in the parking areas, you could consider maybe even a double head or something like that. The entrance to the park and ride, if that fixture was converted from a single head to a double head, well, maybe we could lose pole seven, the fixture along the pathway, you know, as you go into the park and ride. It would change the aesthetics of the area there. But those are, those are options that you do have along the perimeter. I think the question that we have is, is about the funding and at the light levels, if the parking, if the park, rather, is designed in such a way that it doesn't meet the V-Trans guidelines, what, what effect would that have on the funding?
Sylvia, thank you.
Yep. Jeff?
So I guess, one of my last questions is, do we have to, does alternative two have to be done to get the grant funding?
No.
Okay, all right, I just. And then, the economics on the park and ride, how short are we there?
About fifty.
Fifty?
I think fifty thousand, roughly. Two forty-two to three hundred and five, so.
The cost of the diagonal versus the straight in, are they, they're about the same?
Do they separate that?
Because it looked like one of the things they were looking for is the alternative, whether you want alternative A or B, right?
Yeah. They're, they're very similar.
They're very similar. I thought, I thought they were pretty close.
Yeah.
Just, people that are here, it looked like more parking spaces for the straight in, but some concern about width, so which, what, what direction do we give them?
Width and turning radius, my truck, I mean, most trucks cannot have, cannot get into a straight spot like that.
I think the angle is better.
So it sounds like diagonal is what the, what.
Just like a Walmart and Rollin', it gets.
Hard to get in.
Even though it's a few less parking spaces, it sounds like folks.
It's still more than you have.
What currently is.
Yeah, it's still more than we have now, and diagonal looks like there.
Well, could we make the, the roadways a foot wider and make that swing better for you? If you're moving the cannon anyway. Right? I mean, I guess, you're moving things anyway.
Yeah, I.
What's a foot?
You're bumping pretty close to the, the park fence.
Okay, all right. Just throwing it out there.
But it, go ahead.
Something else to say, the park and ride, that's, that's the plan that's kind of, I'm having the hardest time with, is the park and ride, because of the lighting and all the work that we put into our group here and studying all of this. And for myself, I, the placement of the lights and the, to really understand that and see it, I would need a walkthrough. And I have to wonder if as a group, we should set a time to take a walkthrough in the park and ride and say, okay, even take those orange cones and say, this is where it's going to be, or whatever, how wide is the, this garden going to be and, and to do it. And if, you know, if it's only for my purpose.
No, I think it'd be good for everybody. I think we need that walkthrough, I mean, we're not going to settle this tonight.
I can tell from this.
There's a lot more discussion, I think that needs to be had.
We've proved that.
Bob?
Well, I, I want to go ahead and finish that thought, I wanted to talk about the lighting again, one more time.
No, go ahead.
I think that the ultimate question you got to ask first is, do you lose funding if you lose light, lighting? If you, if you pull lighting? And if, you know, V-Trans gets in there and says, no, this isn't, this isn't good, then it's an academic question, you got to go with the lighting you got. But if, if not, there are opportunities, like around, around there to maybe put, putting the lights, pulling the light, putting it in the, in the, you know, the point of the pie, for instance, instead of on each sidewalk. You know, there's, there's, there's opportunities there to save a couple bucks. The other thing that we should be aware of, and, and nobody has said this, but this park hasn't been lighted for a hundred years, this will be a vast improvement, no matter what we do.
Whatever we put in.
But if we can't do it in B to code, then we got to do it to code.
It's got to be done right.
But it would be nice to, to save eighty-five hundred here or there. Of course, then maybe you lose that economy of scale too.
So Brian, I think we as a town need to discuss further, you know, maybe do some site visits, look at some larger plans that are a little more visual than the eight and a half by eleven. And then.
Can I add one, I'd like to add one thing on cost reductions for the park and ride?
Yep.
And both of these alternatives, I did mention expanding the park and ride into the existing park. One of the things is, we could do is take that away, but that, you know, that will reduce costs quite a bit, but it'll also reduce parking stalls. We could just, you know, make sure that from the inner angled parking spot, they have twelve feet minimum for a vehicle to pass through. So it'd be at, approximately at the other edge of the park and ride, or the pavement marking. Another thing that we can look at if, is potentially materials. We're currently calling for a five inch concrete sidewalk. If the town wanted to consider batuminous, there would be some cost savings there. We're, we're also calling for vertical granite curb. If you, did you want to consider maybe a concrete curb? There could be some slight reductions with that. And then, I think even a batuminous curb would be even a greater reduction.
No. I'm thinking crush slate, what we have in the park. It's got to be cheaper.
Where?
The sidewalk in the park.
Oh, just, just on the other side of the fence there?
Well, no, isn't there a sidewalk through the middle of the, of the park and ride? Why couldn't that be?
Crush slate also.
Crush slate.
Instead of using concrete for sidewalk.
Using concrete, yeah. I mean, it, it seems to hold up in the park, obviously it's going to get more traffic and it's going to get plowed more.
It's a little tough for people with balance problems, the crushed slate.
Well, why?
Unless it's kept.
Yeah, I mean, you have to take care of it, but, but the park doesn't seem to bother folks. Or at least.
Maybe you don't know.
So far, it doesn't bother me.
As long as they stay, yeah, as long as they stay on the.
They maintain it.
Yeah.
It's, it, yeah.
Because we've got some pretty big dividends that I've tripped over, selling fifty-fifty tickets, because I'm marking the green grass.
What's going on?
I have one more thing.
No, go ahead.
One more thing, and that's, are any of these parking spaces for handicapped? In the park and ride or around the park? Are any of them handicap spaces?
Yes, we are currently for both alternatives, I believe calling for four.
Okay.
Yes, four handicapped, they are, we place, I think in both alternatives, one near the church, two near the, two or three near the park area, interspersed per ADA, they're supposed to be convenient. That's why we kind of spaced them out accordingly, we didn't know where was most convenient.
I think there needs to be more, because by the apartment building across the street, a lot of those folks use handicap parking.
Okay, this is the, this is the minimum, or per the number of parking stalls, per ADA guidelines, I believe, so I guess you would, I guess we'd need direction from the town as to how many.
Okay. Part of our walking tool.
I think we need to meet, walk, walk the property, then get a punch list for him, so he's not running all over the place. So.
Can Brian meet us?
Joe, do you want to schedule, maybe Brian could come down and do a site visit with, with folks that want to attend?
Yep.
Yeah, we'll schedule this.
All right, any further questions we need tonight, or?
There's money, we'll talk about it later.
Okay, all right, thank you guys. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Sylvia.
No problem.
You're welcome.
If that's all, we'll be going.
All right, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Oh, I thought you guys were all in here for the budget.
They're coming back.
Seal, seal your jacket.
You got to change the stuff. The host, you, it's not, it's not on sound.
Yeah. No, there's nobody there.
So Joe, how much did you have earmarked in the grant match for that?
It's in there.
It's in there?
Yeah, the grant match is there.
But not the additional sixty?
Right?
Well, we don't know if there's other additional grants, grant monies, yet.
Or in-kind work that can be done, or things like that.
Right.
Okay.
Well, he can look into, he said he was going to look into that somewhere, right? And then, there's no sense talking more questions, still there here.
Yeah.
So, so just to, to touch on funding though, we did reach out, there is seventeen-two municipal project for the park lighting. That puts us, if, if, like Jim doesn't draw a salary from this project, that seventeen-two just bumps into the, into construction.
The sixteen you're looking for?
So, so there's your sixteen.
There's room, yeah.
Yeah, so the, the park lighting is, the park lighting is fully funded.
It's for Joe.
With a 10% contingency, we should be fine.
Sorry, Glenn.
The park and ride is a different situation, with the cost of everything going up, we will be short there, even with thirty-two thousand in project management, moving that to construction, that still leaves us shy by about thirty.
Okay. Well, that's not as bad as it looked.
It's not as bad as that original, that initial.
Well, and you still can do alternative two, B, C, whatever, right?
Can't do the two alternatives, wait.
All right, we're going to postpone to the next meeting, or we're going to be here all night?
Sounds good.
Rod's going to get in trouble.
Yes, see, here he is, again.
Yeah.
Yeah, that took a lot longer.
Regular meeting, calling to order now, amendments to the agenda, any amendments needed?
Go ahead.
Approval of the minutes from May eighteenth.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from May eighteenth as written.
Second.
Motion by Glenn, seconded by Carol, to approve the May eighteenth minutes. Any corrections needed? Okay, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Motion carries. Department head reports, Aaron, do you want to go?
You missed one.
Five minutes.
Number six.
I already checked it off, no. Five minutes for public comment. Go ahead, John.
Well, I usually celebrate my 80th birthday.
Happy birthday!
And back when Crystal was on the board, way back a long time ago, I got permission
for this, four or five, welcome to the table.
Remember that?
Sidon, got to be a year old, I want to turn over the maintenance of those signs that Aaron, he's here, he does a pretty good job keeping them all. The one down to exit one, RV, and the one up to on loop twenty-two A, could use some scraping. That's about the only part of that, so I appreciate if somebody from TPW would do that.
They look nice.
You know, they've held up well for.
Except for the one on twenty-two A, you've got some straightening.
Straightening?
Yeah.
Kind of got a little bit of hector, got a little up there.
Was it the wind that got that?
No, it was a truck.
Somebody ran into that.
Oh, no, that's the one that got smashicated.
Yeah, right, okay.
All right, well, most of them held up well.
Anyway, yeah.
I think Parker was in Joel's office for a while.
I think it still is.
Oh.
Give it to him for a birthday present.
All right, anything else, John? Anybody else for public comment? Okay. Now over to Aaron for TPW.
Hi, we're in the, continuing to trip away at spring road stuff. Petting sweeping as we can, and some grading as we can, of course, the weather seems to alternate what it wants to be very rapidly. We had bike out, people love the car payment plan for the year, still waiting for some pricing on that, as well as scheduling. He says, of course, as he says every year, they're extremely busy, so I'm hoping he comes back with the idea of what the price is going to be on, so we can move forward with that, as well as schedule being the bigger thing for me, so that I know when, when they're coming to town. Waiting on dates from the line of starting company for that downtown area, I know they have, I talked to them today, have five towns ahead of us, we're hoping that they bang those out real quick and get here by July one. Next couple weeks here, the boys are hydro flushing this week, next week we'll be out in those roads that are determined to be, we're paving this year to do any work that needs to be done to them before the paving opens here. Swamp road needs at least one culvert at this point, Union Street would need rehab, or the top of the manholes would need to be adjusted for height. Furnace Street, we still have the, figuring out to do on dry wells, as well as, I believe there's a few manholes on that street that will need some adjustment as well. Airport Road is just mostly water valve cover relocation. Airport Road is just mostly water valve cover relocations, so, uh, Water Department's been busy again, uh, starting on water meters. Um, I know they've gotten quite a few done. Uh, last time I talked to them, there's a possibility we're even under 50 at this point. So, uh, seems like we're catching the people that might pick out that might be a problem, not being so much of a problem. Um, one of them up on River Street, the highway department had been involved to dig down and get the curb stop, uh, working due to there not being a valve in front of the height or the meter on R, in front of meters that have been shutting down. Um, plants, uh, having a few hiccups with electrical stuff up there. Um, Mike and I have been working trying to clear that stuff out. Um, just something to bring to your attention as we talk sewer water budgets. Um, a lot of it seems to be worth thinking to do with the 420, um, signal which tells all the controls, is the, the plant what to do. So as the water's coming through, it tells the chemical pumps how much chemicals to pump into the system as the water's passing through the plant, as well as, um, opening and closing valves in the plant to either let the flow go if it's time for more water to get through fast, or to ramp it down. Something we've been watching for a while is having a few more issues, and we're trying to get that figured out as quickly as we can. Um, otherwise, no, happy to report no major issues. Um, Sewer Department, Dr. Waste Water Plant, if you haven't been down, there's three trailers there construction and a few big excavators.
Another, another one today.
Another one today. They started moving and rubbing a lot of the area, they're hoping, I believe it's Thursday to start digging for the new oxidation ditch, which is the big component of, uh, this thing, that big new aeration tank system on the west end of the plant. So far, uh, there's still a bunch of submittal stuff going back and forth between the other bringing the engineers, and we've had to get in a couple of items here or there. Um, they're still going back and forth on stuff. There is already some materials on site, um, so that's a good thing. Uh, steel was been, I think, one of the better concerns, and I see there's already some steel door frames, as much as, you know, those are probably sitting around, but it sounds like everything's in the stairs these days. Still waiting on dates on the sewer manhole rehab crew that we have lined up to do four manholes before hopefully July 1. I have to reach out to them again and see if they're definitely gonna be in. Uh, tentative ship date on the jet backup generator for Adam Street Pump Station, early September. The contractor that we awarded is hoping that date comes back sooner, if timeline gets moved up a little bit, but as everyone I talked to, when I'm vendors and such, that they're looking for help on every aspect. But, you know, funny story, came back to the barn one day after the guys were, they were out doing something, I came back to the barn, one of our vendors had been through and dropped off a flyer, both sides of the flyer said they were looking for helpers. It wasn't selling anything, they were trying to poach people. And I haven't contacted them yet, but I'm gonna contact them and ask them not to do that stuff.
Aaron, kind of along that line, um, you know the project list that you gave us a couple of months ago with the timeline?
Yeah.
Could you, would you mind bringing that back with updates on it, if everything's getting pushed around, just so we could see where we're at with stuff?
For sure.
Thank you.
On the generator, Aaron?
Yeah.
Did you do the, the second look at, uh, to make sure we're not gonna get deluged with water coming down the street? Remember, we talked about that?
Yeah, we've looked again, and, uh, the way the site's gonna sit, it's gonna be propped up anyway. We'll make sure that where it sits, we bear it.
As long as you looked at it with that in mind specifically, and you feel good about it?
Yeah, uh, if anything, I know we're looking to do some roof work at the same time, it might be a good point for us to throw gutters even on that, to keep water even percolating away from off the roof towards that, and myself. I think, I feel very confident that we won't have an issue there. Um, if we do have an issue there or something-
You gotta look at that 100-year storm, though.
Right, more than that, definitely.
Yeah.
On Adam Street and Academy Street, we did receive submittals on the breakout of the controls. The vendor went through them, we looked them over, he had a few changes to make. Um, I believe the, the order went through today, or he sent the order in, did the order started on those control panels. I do not have a date on those just yet. Uh, I will have to talk with him more as we get into this a little deeper, uh, cause the generator and control panel thing, you need to tie in somewhat together. Uh, the way it's working is, the new controls were not set up to run the generator system we have there now. Um, and the looking we've done into that generator system, there's no manual control that we found easy as of yet. Um, so we're, I'm hoping to be able to time this out. The plan is to time it out that that backup generator comes online first, so when those new controls go in, there's no delay in having an issue there, or we're calling people. Other than that, I think I, I recognize business going on for-
Christopher, I mean?
Yeah, go ahead, John.
He talking about water valves and stuff. The one on Airport Road and my granddaughter driveway comes up every winter, and you guys push it down every spring. They stick it up now, but-
Which address?
Uh, 99.
Yeah, Line Airport.
And also, there's a post comes up out of the ground, just south of that, I don't know what that is. You might be able to dig around that and pull it out, if you can.
Other questions for Aaron? No, all right, thank you. Um, police chief, are you?
I'm the police chief today.
Perfect.
Oh, so the, the police have had two arrests in the last two weeks, one wanted person, one, uh, one DUI, a gentleman who's going 91 in a 50 mile an hour. He's, uh, he's making good time.
It happens.
Sometimes, lead foot. Uh, the police are taking part in a two-week clicker ticket enforcement in and around Fairhaven, so you'll see them, uh, out and about with the help of other towns and I think the county as well. Uh, we did bring on Mark Guttel, uh, he's our part-time animal control officer helping out with that. G-U-T-E-L. Uh, he hit the ground running, uh, doing really well, he's handled two, uh, two cases already. And, uh, I reported out earlier, uh, the police chief had found a, uh, a good solution to, uh, people camping on the, on the streets. He, he found a better solution today. Um, 19 VSA 1106, uh, actually prohibits people from camping in the right of way. Uh, I think I heard some folks when they were coming in that, uh, the police have made contact and they're asking that camper to, um, be on its way.
On its way?
That's a, that's a $50 fine.
Parking on the other side of the street didn't help.
That doesn't count. Yes. So, we put, uh, five maple to bed, if we remember, we had somebody deed a piece of property to the town that, uh, the town didn't know about. We put that to bed today, um, and had a, it was a deed that actually denied the piece of property, so that's been filed with the town clerk finally, uh, and that project has done.
Well, I put the property after that.
Goes back.
Nothing, it's not, we have no concern.
No problem.
Uh, Rec is working with the Fairhaven High School to provide recreation for some of the kids that are not Fairhaven residents. Uh, the school got a whole bunch of grant money, um, and they're gonna, they're gonna help defray the cost for some of our out-of-town kids. But to be clear, Fairhaven residents, uh, and their children still do not pay for recreation opportunities. And I'm gonna bring this up, not later this meeting, but in a few meetings as a larger part of, uh, discussing our revenue, so I feel like there's some opportunity, um, with recreation that, that maybe we can, uh, work out. Uh, we'll have three tax sales July 6th, those are in, those are in the works. Legal is doing two of our, um, other large tax sales, I'm trying to get them to do the sales on July 6th as well. 6th as well. John and I will be here on the 15th, the same, that's the select board meeting, uh, talking about a health order for 22 Mechanic Street. Um, they have a few days to clean up the mess, um, they'll be getting their order in the mail in the next couple of days. After that, they'll have to come and talk to the board. The board can then, which I don't expect anybody to show, um, the board can then issue the health order, and we'll move on from there.
That went a long way with you going to speak to the neighbor up there? In a positive way?
Oh, good.
That was good, yeah.
Yeah, we tried.
You've been able to make contact with the owners, I know it's multiple parties? Or not? Yes?
Yeah, we've, uh, we've made contact with the, the potential purchaser of the property and the owner herself.
Our owner.
Yeah, um, there's really not any movement. At least not from, not from where I'm sitting.
But you two will present that at the next board meeting?
There's no improvement so far.
All right.
So, uh, fish removal, I'm actually gonna need a little bit of guidance on this one. Um, there's still, without doing an actual survey, we still don't know whose pond it is, um, but we do have a permit to remove those fish. I did hear today, so if the board would like to-
Not, not that way.
If, if the board would like to kick the can a little bit, uh, I heard there was a couple of herons pretty much destroying that population, that fish population.
But, good for them.
So, yeah, maybe we'll just, we'll put that off.
They're hungry birds. They like your stock fish.
Yeah, they're, they're doing well, I guess.
I know that's on your agenda later, but I'll, I'll wait till then, yeah.
Um, and then the dog, the dog park, we still don't have much movement. Um, the, uh, young lady that's doing the delineation will be here on June 17th. Delineation at the airport.
Just remind me closer, so we, I'd like to meet up with that.
Okay, any questions for town manager and police chief?
Head's getting big.
All right.
I don't wanna do that.
Thanks, Joe. Okay, old business, uh, invasive fish discussion, I think we just had a little bit of it. The only question I had is with them, the maps, they're fairly accurate online, and especially for it to go and draw a circle around exactly where the pond is, makes me think that the map is accurate. I mean, usually, when you, you look at those maps, there's some of the straight lines may be over shifted a little bit, but this one purposely draws around the pond, which makes me think it's-
Close.
Not on the town's property. Obviously, I don't know that for sure, but-
Without doing the survey, it's, it seems weird to do it like that, but it seems intentional.
It does, that's, yes, I would agree.
And I would say if you were going to, if there's any dispute, you'd need, like, sign permission from the-
Well, they give verbal permission.
Put a disclaimer in writing from them that-
Yeah.
Until you get something, I, we've been burned enough till I see that here is the property line, or if we, if this person that says it's not their pond, it's ours, we get some kind of documentation that says-
Even if it is, I'm cool.
That they're just verbally saying that they say this and we say that.
Has anyone read the property deed of the town?
That was my next question, cause if you read that property deed, it's gonna describe that, right?
I mean, it hits pins.
This north to that south, but a surveyor is gonna know exactly what that means.
Sure.
Visually on, on a map, by the coordinates.
I did. She, she says it's not her pond.
She says it's not her pond.
Which, it's weird to think it would be, the way it is.
Personally, I like blaming it on the herons' union right now.
Yeah, maybe they'll take care of it.
And we, we have it covered, right?
There's, there's nothing getting out, so the whole idea of fixing it is not having these fish get out into the, the stream and we ending up being fined. So that's under control.
They're not getting out because they put a grade up?
Screened, uh, right, Aaron, you guys put a screen over it?
Yes.
Yeah.
And you go fishing on your lunch break?
That's what they've been eating for lunch.
All right.
There's gotta be a deed to the cemetery property somewhere.
Yeah, that describes it.
I bet George would go down there pretty reasonable and, uh, mark it out for you based on the deed.
Depends how old, how old the deed is. If it was 300 years ago, then, oh, he'll probably wanna research it again.
Yep.
All right.
Let me ask why a little years for-
We don't know, he may have surveyed it.
He may have done it.
And that's what I'm saying, he might just know. There's a few people-
Um, next item, water abatement request. Joe, do you wanna present that and go through it?
Uh, so we did receive a, an abatement for a sewer, uh, for sewage use from Green Mountain Mobile Manor, uh, that's the trailer park on Airport Road. The abatement request came in at $31,666.07. That number represents, uh, sewer charges from 818 to 5521, so most recent. So I'll start with, I'll start with, with the manager recommendation, and then I'll, I'll buzz down for the reasons that the manager has recommended this. Uh, I recommend fully denying this request. Uh, points to consider when we're looking at our water and sewer, well, looking at our sewer ordinance, uh, the sewer billing is based on water consumption, not on sewer, sewer use, sewer consumption. There's no way to measure sewer use. There's no meter there. Uh, water consumption is not in dispute, and that, so if our sewer rate is based on water use, that number is credible and accurate. A sewer, the sewer ordinance does not address, uh, sewer abatement for sewer leak. So by giving a sewer abatement for this request, we would actually be going contrary to what our ordinance says, it's just, it's silent on this, on this option. Besides that, it would be hard to, if we can't measure what's coming out, it would be almost impossible to tell in the future, or even in this point, um, what really came into our system. So I can imagine, I could imagine a time when maybe we did have a sewer pipe cracked on a different property. Only half of my sewage went into your system, so I'm not gonna pay you the total amount, I'm only gonna pay you half. But there's no way to verify. Uh, section-
Can I just point out something? I, you, I think I, you just said that the ordinance does not allow for, uh, a sewer abatement based upon a leak.
Based on sewer leak?
About, based upon sewer leak. But in the, in this, the last line says, the ordinance does allow-
Should say, it should say does not.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, sorry typo.
I just, I realized there was a direct-
Yeah, contribution, no, it should say does not.
Okay, sorry.
Uh, no, no, that's, that's my fault. Um, a few other sections in the, uh, in the ordinance to consider, section 801, uh, says properties may be char, may be charged whether or not the property's occupied, when the property's connected to the public sewage system by the necessary building sewer. The, the system was connected, while it was brought to the town's attention that may, perhaps it wasn't, um, it's not the onus of the town of Fairhaven to come and say, hey, I'm not using your sewer anymore. The onus rests on the property owner to say, hey, something's wrong, something's gotta change. This is why we have those forms that when people connect to our system, they say how much sewage they're gonna use, how much water they're gonna use, and that's, and they get charged accordingly.
The sewer was just leaking into-
The wetlands.
It was gray water.
Uh, another interesting fact of our water, our sewer ordinance, um, if somebody knowingly violates these provisions, which is the case, any person violating any of these provisions under this ordinance become liable to the town of Fairhaven for any expense and loss. If the town does decide to abate $31,000, that is considered a loss, and individuals that knowingly broke this ordinance can be held accountable for that.
So we have Joe's recommendation, um, is there-
Okay, so my question to you people is, so we pay a sewer charge, what do we pay this sewer charge for? Just because we do water? What do we pay a sewer charge for?[1742.01] What do, what is it for?
Your sewer is based on water consumption.
I realize this, why do I pay that? Why am I paying that charge to the town, or what?
For the use of sewage, for our wastewater.
No, to clean what we're using. We didn't clean nothing from that park, because that pump station was a total failure, and the town admitted that in the paper, that they knew it had failed, but yet they still charged every quarter for sewer or gray water, 'cause I have, we all have our own septic systems. So, we paid all, all this for gray water they never received. How can that be fair?
Is it a, is it a split system, that gray and black, or-
They have their own systems, they have their own tanks. The state forced us to pump our gray water to the town. We had our own leak fields, but they pushed us to pump it to the town. That pump station failed, we weren't getting it. Was I proud of it? Absolutely not. Was I trying to take care of it? Yes. I was working with the state. It is now working, but I don't see where that park has to pay, when they don't even have it. Thirty some thousand dollars for nothing this town ever received.
I guess I'm confused. The, the definition of gray water is sink and shower. No toilet. How, how are the trailers all separating their-
Because they have their own tanks.
Well, but, the tank is-
You have to have water go through your systems to make-
Right, so it's the output of the tank, their tank that's going into the pump station.
No, it's the water. Their tanks collect the solids. It's the water that goes-
Water is mixing with the solids, which is not gray water.
That's sewage. There, there's not gray water. Gray water is, the worst is soap and toothpaste. But this is-
Dishwater.
This, yeah, dishwater, or so, uh, uh, shower water. But this is, all of it goes out of the trailer, goes into their tank, and the tank digests it, and I understand that. But they don't, they just don't have a leak field. So, the, 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 the town, uh, digests the outflow of the, the tanks, which is not gray water, it's, it's sewer, sewage.
Well, whatever, the town wasn't getting it.
Just, just a question about-
That's the only thing I'm saying.
When, it sounds like there was gray water that was going to the town, and something happened in May of 2018-
Yes.
Where it stopped. My, when I, when I read the letter and this information, the, the question that came to mind that I wanted to ask is, it's three years later.
I know.
Um, and I would, I, I was just wondering why I hadn't seen a request sooner than that.
To do something? Because I was embarrassed, I wouldn't have done nothing until the article in the paper came out and the town admitted, they knew this happened. And I'm thinking, well, if they knew this, how could they in all conscience have charged for that sewer for all that time, if they knew we weren't getting it?
And my, my other, and my, my other question maybe, I just wanna add, but I'm saying, it would seem that if, and it sounds like you were working with the state and, and the town, that this gray water that wasn't coming into our system was going somewhere.
Mm-hmm.
Probably, and, and, and the, so the part, when I was looking at the 31,666, I'm wondering where, if, if there's even greater potential penalty costs for having that water not go there to someone. I mean, and, I looked and, and go, wait a minute, I, I, there could be a lot more than that, that, that there's some liability sitting around, uh, for putting that in, out. I, I take it that it probably just went, uh, in the area of the land around there. So I'm going, okay.
Other question, I mean, go ahead.
Well, and, well, the other, when, so when you're, there was, when I look at what you're asking for the 31,666.71, there was also some, recently some grant to help with water and sewer that came, is this after deducting the, the, because-
Yes.
Because-
Yes.
This is in addition to-
The actual water charge is well over $10,000.
Is there a plan for moving forward, or that's not really part of this discussion? To get that, to not have that gray water?
This is a problem, am I correct?
It has been corrected.
Twenty, the 21st of May, it says here that the problem was corrected, right?
It was a problem with the pump station, or it was a problem with the broken line?
Well, there were several things, there were several things. First, it was my pump wasn't working, so I contacted a plumber, um, which I worked with for a couple of years, which proved not to be my friend, but anyways, um, they found where our power to the pump station had been severed. So, we had to, had to hire an electrician, dig a new trench, put in the power, boot, circuit board, whatever. So then, I thought we were good to go, and I was told we were good to go, and then I get news that I'm still putting out gray water on the ground. So, the next issue, well, there's a pump, or the pipe is broke from the pump house to the tank that goes, takes to the town. And of course, all this I put in somebody else's hands, and it would come, fall time, they'd work on it, and winter comes and there wasn't time to do it. Okay? So, um, I finally went ahead and hired somebody to come in, dig and fix the pipe. I gave money to my plumber and said, get the pump going. I had to buy a new pump, a thousand dollar pump, 'cause both mine had gone. So, I said, get the pump going. He come to me on a Sunday, we're good. Few days later, Kane's from, uh, the attorney from up there called me, they have you still pumping on the ground. Oh, oh, yeah. Not to my knowledge, but I was. And so I finally hired Ross Plumbing and Heating, and we're now working, and he said to me that pump had never been working. After I paid somebody money, et cetera. That's here and there, that's my mistake. But, uh, we're now working.
Okay, other questions? Any more background you guys need? We have our manager's recommendation. Is there action the board wants to take, or not?
Well, I guess-
More information needed?
This, this includes both base rate as well as the variable? No, okay, the base rate-
This is only used, base rate was stripped out of this.
Okay.
The, the 31.6, though, includes everything?
No.
Only-
Base rate stripped. This is only use we're talking about.
Yeah, I didn't figure any of the base rate.
You didn't?
And I really, and I really don't want this money. I just want my water and sewer bill taken care of, and what's left over put towards the taxes. You know, it's, it's not like I want the town to give me this.
So I'm, I'm having a hard time, only because the situation that I see is, uh, what's to prevent the next person from taking a hacksaw and just cutting the pipe and putting it out, uh, you know, out from their house and not into our system, coming in six months and saying, I haven't been using your, your, uh, your system, I need an abatement. And I, I can't measure it, I can't tell exactly when, uh, but I will set the precedent with this, that I abate for leaks.
It wasn't a leak, no. It was nothing, you weren't getting it, buried it.
No, no, that's what I mean, I-
I know, but, but you-
No, no, I understand, I-
You charge us people, you charge us the sewer charge, because we have to-
To deal with the sewage.
Into the waste system and clean it and take care of it. And I just feel that you did not get any of that. And believe me, if there was other money to be fined, the state would be doing it. I know.
I agree. Question for, for Joe, because I, I'm only looking at this saying, um, as, as our attorney weighed in, that, because I, I'd be concerned that if we, first of all, gray water shouldn't have been going, not in the system. And I'd be concerned that if we abated anything, it's like saying as a town, here's your money back, it's okay, and we'd be liable for, for more on top, just so you understand, I worry about accepting liability. I, I come more from a standpoint of saying, don't know what, who knew what was broken when, but, but I, at the end of the day, when I read the, the, the ordinance on sewer, it was pretty clear that it's the responsibility of the property owner to make sure things are working. And that's, and, and by keeping my hands back from that, I don't get into a place where the state of Vermont wants to come to town of Fairhaven and say, and that's where my concern, yeah, it's just, just so you understand.
Well, that's-
So I, I, so I don't know what, if, if we'd had legal even weigh in to say, okay, if you went one way or another, it may be a moot point, but I'd be-
Well, I'll tell you, the, the attorney from the environmental board, Kane Smart, knows exactly I was going to do this.
Okay.
Because I talked to him about the time that we were off from the town. And so he knows what, you know, I was gonna put forward to the town, so they will be coming out for you. But then I can understand what you're saying too, is if somebody just cuts their line.
I mean, just my opinion on it, I, I can understand a few months, but three years is a little, little much. Probably should have been addressed, I know you tried to, but it should have been addressed immediately when it was known, and it wasn't, so, just where I'm coming at.
I agree.
So, so right now, uh, I would need some kind of motion from the board even to abate portion, all, or, or the whole request, or none?
I'm, oh, you're looking, you're looking to me for a motion, right? I'll, I'll make a motion that, that we accept the town manager's recommendation not to abate sewer charge.
Second it.
Okay, motion by Glenn, seconded by Carol, to, um, not abate the requested sewer abatement, um, per the town manager's recommendation. Uh, questions? Any further comment on it? No? Okay, all favor the motion?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Motion carries?
Based upon this experience, we may want to close that-
Open the-
The, the, the discussion-
Yeah.
Uh, in the ordinance.
Yeah.
To make it very clear.
Joe, you have a-
But I mean, the, there's implications, Joe, I mean, it's implying-
Yeah.
But it's, it, it should blast it louder.
So our next review of ordinances for the sewer water, can you just put a note for that in there?
Wish list.
To, when we say close, close the loophole, what, something to say?
The leaks are on the property owner and that.
But, to, to tell you the truth, I, I would be all for, uh, language which allowed a penalty if it goes on, yeah, for a period of time.
I was thinking more of like, if you would say, more than 30 days without the problem being-
Resolved.
She had some bad luck with vendors and stuff like that, but it's-
Some timeline in there.
Yeah, sometime, I don't, we don't have to discuss the timeline. Whatever it is.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
The time I've got spent in that in three years' time?
No, I'm sure the hundred dollars you get a year.
It's well worth it, so. Alright, moving on, new business, outdoor seating request. There's a request in there from the new brewery from downtown?
So, so the brewery actually emailed today and said they're withdrawing that request.
Okay.
Request withdrawn.
They're moving operations, or?
No, no, the, the schematic that they provided, they couldn't get, they couldn't get what they wanted unless they-
They're rethinking.
Yeah, they're gonna come back.
Okay, okay, alright, that, that's good.
And they're hoping they can see people inside-
Yes.
By the time we get there.
Uh, water sewer budget, second discussion. Um, I talked with Joe the other day, and I think some of the concern the board has was short funding the reserve accounts. I think that was consensus of the board, that we wanted Joe and Aaron to take a look at those again, um, as we move forward with the budget process. Is there other, other items you guys are looking at, concerns?
Just, uh, that, when I looked at the water sewer, it, I really was looking for a little more clarification on the water, what the water base rate and sewer base rates were for the 21, 22.
Yeah.
What, what the proposal is, based on these numbers, if we buy these, is, was the only note I had to myself. The, that's the, the-
You just, you just wanna make sure that all of the new, um, some costs of the sewer plant are in there?
So what we're, what we're saying with this, just so we're clear, what we're saying with these water and sewer numbers is that the water use rate is going to go down to $6.73, that's what I'm reading here.
Yep.
The water base rate is gonna stay at $38.50.
Yes.
And for the 21, 22, the wa, the sewer use rate is going to go from 1348 up to 13, or from 1342 up to 1348.
Yes.
And the sewer base rate of 1630 stays the same.
1630, yeah, exactly.
Okay. And, and I, 'cause I, I look at that and I, and I thought the number, knowing that we had the sewer bond and everything, I would have thought it would have been higher.
Wouldn't it?
But it, because they took money out of capital improvement-
They didn't take money out, they just-
Didn't, didn't put the money in.
Didn't put it in, yeah.
And that, that's the, the reason it's staying 1630 is because-
Did we fund the capital improvement part out of the sewer base rate?
It's one pot of money.
No.
Where did that?
The 1630's been flat for three years, or will be, you're saying it was flat for three years, right?
That's it.
Yeah, right there, right? I thought I had the right one. Yes, Jeff, right? It's been-
Yeah, a flat. So I guess, and there's like $40 in fixed costs coming from that plant, right? 35, 40?
Dollars?
On the base rate. When, when that plant goes online and we have to start paying the, the bond back-
Sure.
Which is this year, right?
Yes.
So shouldn't there be $35 added to that number?
No. The, looking at this, the, so that 75, whatever it is, $75,000 is already baked into your budget.
And you're putting it all on the sewer use side?
Aaron and sewer and myself sat down and said, we need to find $75,000 to cut out of this budget. They went through and slashed the budget to accommodate a $75,000 bond payment. Whether it's a bond payment, or it's a $75,000 pair of sneakers, it doesn't matter, it's just that's the cost. And the, the cost will reflect in your budget, in your rates. Does that make sense?
I cut 75,000 out to add 75,000 in.
But part of that cut was in-
Only in sewer.
Only in sewer, because sewer is only responsible for that.
I, I know what you're thinking, 'cause I was saying, I, I was thinking too, Jeff, that, okay, doesn't that mean we're just kicking the can down the road and there's gonna be a big jump? Because we, we-
What are we deferring?
What are we deferring and how, oh, we're not gonna defer capital improvement for the length of the bond, so I know, I, but what you mean is, sooner or later, that's going to, that's going to start-
I'm still wrapping my head around it, I didn't expect that answer, so.
Well.
Was that clear?
Here we go.
I have a philosophical issue with this, because you can't, in my opinion, hit the, uh, taxpayers with $76,000 in additional money and not hit the sewer users a penny.
I have heard that.
Okay. Having a sewer treatment plant is expensive. You are paying someone to take care of your effluent. Okay? It doesn't come free. And basically, you hit the taxpayers, all the taxpayers, and you, you're not touching the tax, the, the sewer rate? I understand what you did.
I'm, I just don't think it's a sustainable-
I, I don't think it's sustainable, and I, I can't justify-
We did steal from the future, Alan. That's, that's what this is.
And that's not sustainable.
40,000 of it, right? 25,000 is budget cuts?
Um, 15, 15,000 for reserve allocations.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you have people that use both and get taxed, you have people that use just water, not the sewer, and get taxed for everything, and then you have the people that don't use either. And everybody's getting taxed the same. I know, we all know that.
The rate is the same, but it's based upon the per thousand, a phrase?
No, she.
Yes.
Carol's agreeing with you, she's just re-stating what you're saying.
Right, right. But, but we're not all paying the same, is what I'm saying. You don't get paid, you don't pay a thousand, I pay a thousand, Carol pays a thousand. It's based, it's based upon the rate is the same for everyone. Rate per thousand. Of appraised value.
Well, I thought you were talking about tax rate as well.
That's, that's.
Yeah, okay, alright, alright. Fifteen thousand.
So do you wanna see what that number looks like if we add fifteen thousand?
I'd even go to say. How we were able to get to the budget right there, if we, if we took the sewer base rate and added ten dollars to that sewer base rate and became twenty-six thirty from sixteen thirty.
What is that?
What is that in dollars that I could possibly, this, this, my question would be that I could put into, bring that capital reserve back up instead of kicking the can down the road, I'd feel a little more comfortable to, from your standpoint, I'm on water and sewer and I'm going, not, I expected that that base rate was gonna. Go up. I was pleasantly, I was pleasantly surprised when the initial proposal said no, but I'm going, that really, my sense of fairness is it needs, it needs to go up, and also knowing that I'm, I'm sacrificing some of the future. I'd rather say, if that went up, I'd rather, instead of a big jump, out two to three, cause I think you're just prolonging. And you're gonna make the jump even seem greater. I, that, I'd rather take the pain.
It might also give a false sense of. To, to people saying, wow, we got all that and look.
Seventy-five.
Joe's going crazy, he's like, you want me to spend more?
No, no, I don't want you to spend more. Well, what I'm having a hard time with is that, I don't think there was necessarily.
So.
I don't think there was necessarily seventy-five thousand in there slush to cut. I feel like we've agonized over this budget for several years now, and I don't believe that there was seventy thousand in there. And yet.
It's, so, this budget, this budget, there, just in sewer treatment plant alone, sixty-nine thousand dollars was cut out of it. We're not, we're not, we're not saving money. The water plant didn't cut seventy thousand. What they did was they bought a six million dollar new plant, so they don't have to spend seventy thousand dollars on the old one now.
And you think that's sustainable? Thirty, forty years?
No, no, what, you're, you're looking for why the reasons these, these numbers are low, is because we're no longer maintaining an old plant that's decommissioned.
Which makes sense to a certain point.
Do we have a warranty on this plant?
If you can see the taillights, completely covered. Once the taillights are gone.
When's the new plant gonna be commissioned, ready to go?
There's a five, five hundred days to a timeout.
Beyond this budget anyway.
Yeah, so we're gonna have all those costs in here.
Right, so.
There's portions broke out of it, but there is still. Plenty of equipment that could say, no, you need to spend a lot of money on it now, just to maintain your effluent.
For five hundred years, or five hundred days.
It'll only feel like five hundred years.
Carrie was here to attest to that, the list that we had from the engineers, that was the two to five years is when you're gonna see failure of this equipment. We're in probably a year or two when we've seen that list.
We're in here two and a half.
And that list is almost obsolete already.
It's spot on.
So, am I getting the hint that you don't agree with the seventy thousand dollars of cut?
I do not like to see the capital. If we can find savings inside of, we understand that there's gonna be new pieces, parts coming online that we won't be spending money at the plant. I, my personal professional opinion would always be that money is put into another piece of the pie that is failing. And I would tell you that I could use every penny you give me in the sewer line infrastructure. To make that six and a half million dollars worth of, six and a half million dollar plant able to do its job. The four manholes we have scheduled for repair are over five thousand dollars, and that was a hard cut. That was fixing the bottom and fixing the top three feet, and some of them are thirteen feet tall. Everything in between, I said, we don't have the money for that now.
That's what I mean, I think the plant is, well, it's not a small portion of the, overall, but it's the infrastructure to get to the plant is expensive as well. I know we spent money, invested money on it recently, but there's a lot more to be had there. I don't know where that gets us in the conversation.
Right now, you have a request from Glenn to reverse engineer, you know, the budget, you know, starting with a ten, ten dollar increase. I don't think ten is enough, but that's, I don't know the answer to his question.
I, I don't know. I know that if, whatever we don't do now, I think it's gonna be twice as painful further down the road when we go, oh my god, we need this. And when you do the math, it now costs this, and I'd rather work my way towards it than to have to have this huge increase that's gonna happen. Down the road, that's my only concern. I don't.
I think it's painfully apparent that we haven't ever put enough in the future of that plant.
Right. That's why we needed a million dollar bond.
That plant is well run. You guys definitely got your money out of that plant.
No, what I'm saying is we never put enough into the future to replace it.
So that, so when the replacement came, it's just never bump in the road. We put enough money aside.
And, and to be fair, we're not gonna get there.
Oh, no, I don't think so.
So I mean, we don't, we can't get there, but we can get a little closer than zero.
You'll never save six million dollars.
No, no.
So do you want, do you want Joe to kinda do a little chart for the next meeting? You know, what's twenty-six thirty, what, eighteen thirty, what fifteen, no, not fifteen thirty?
Put some intelligence to it, that's, that's the numbers.
We're catching a cold here. The rest of the stuff looks, looks pretty good.
Where do I see the general fund money coming in?
And if we could put.
You don't.
Some capital.
Joe, where does the general fund money come, figure into these numbers?
There is no general fund money.
Sure, but you collected general fund money. That's the point.
You mean general fund like taxes?
The seventy-six thousand dollars.
Different, so, different, it's not shown in this, cause that money is in a different budget.
But shouldn't it be reflected in your rate?
It's reflected in debt service. It's reflected in your debt service.
Well, okay, so it is in here. Here, you mean? Twenty-five, six, four, ten? No, you're showing that you're not paying a portion of the principal. Is that what you're saying? You, there's some of the principal that doesn't show up in here?
For, for the bond payment.
That's only a portion.
This is, only half of that bond is reflected in this number. The other half is sitting in another account somewhere.
Just wrapping my head around it, that's all.
Sorry, I didn't understand.
I was wondering if it was just in here, you know, if it popped into your equation somehow.
Alright, other questions?
Yeah, yeah, so let, if Joe could put a chart together that showed us what, what a few different reserve account numbers would do to your base rate, I guess.
The base?
You're gonna do base or usage? Does anybody have a?
Well, usage, they, it looks like they already, I know we had the discussions going in when we were looking for how we're gonna pay this over the past year and a half, we talked about the base rate moving up. As that, that, so I'm saying, I wanna be consistent with what I told people in, at the information meetings and everything else when we said the base rate means, and, and when we told them that if we didn't, if the option tax didn't, one percent option tax didn't go through, you could expect this much and this much, and there should be a calculation that comes out and says, this is what the base rate is.
I mean, I think people will be happy that it's less.
I don't need to take the full.
Exactly.
Oh, exactly, that's what I'm saying. But I'd also be worried doing nothing, that it's gonna come back and we're gonna have to pay for that and it'll be a pretty substantial jump when it happens.
So, so if you wanted to add ten thousand to your capital improvement, it would raise your base rate to nineteen dollars and ninety cents while keeping the rate relatively flat.
Three dollars and sixty cents on the base rate.
It, it, it's not always three sixty, cause it sometimes shifts because of rounding, but that will be close. That'll be close.
Three sixty per ten thousand.
Thereabouts, yes.
Yeah, ish, yeah. Three sixty ish.
Because then you can do the math and say, okay, we've got this many rate payers and this, how, when does it come up to seventy-five thousand?
Do you guys want me to take it out, or do you guys wanna tinker with it now?
Take it out, what do you mean, take it out?
You want me to take it, take it to?
Oh, take it to your office.
Yeah, you want me to take it to the office, or does the board wanna tinker with this number now, is what?
What's the chair wanna do?
We have time, we don't, we've got another two meetings.
Right, we got time.
I was, so, I was gonna bring up later, but in June, we have three meetings. We have the guys coming down on the park lighting. Chris and I can't be at the next meeting. His daughter's graduating from eighth grade, so, I was gonna say we could add a meeting to look at the park lighting, but maybe we could.
Do the budget after.
So what, I just wanted to say, we're not gonna be here that day.
We, we should add a meeting specifically for, you know, sewer budget.
Can we do it at the tail end of the walkthrough of the, the park?
I was on such a good streak, I haven't had extra meetings. For no budgets.
You done good, Joe. We're going to ourselves.
He did good, and we threw up, we did it to ourselves, yeah.
Well, we can do it tonight, but I just want, did you know that next week, next meeting, we won't be here?
So if you'd put the full seventy-five in here, it would bump that base rate up to forty-three thirty. So that lines up with where my head was at.
That's what I was thinking, the number I was expecting, and figured we could fight by working. Bring it down to the mid thirties.
If you took last year's number and just added seventy-five thousand to it?
Yes.
Yes, that would be right. About, yeah.
Well, the capital has, as well, had to take a cut on the notes, just sorry.
More significant even, than water. The only difference is water has some money.
Yeah, what was?
In the reserve. You are. You are correct.
Two sixty-two, sewers, three twenty-six.
Sewer, though, just playing on that being effectively wiped to zero, right? There's, there was the sixty thousand saved out for your other pump station, but we spent that, so I think it's. Whereas the water being at two sixty-two is gonna, is, it's at least there for a while. Right, there's no significant.
The intake tunnel.
The intake tunnel will never.
You're looking at a controls revamp of the plant.
So I'm assuming that the intake tunnel wouldn't be the same, you wouldn't dig a new tunnel, you could just drill like an artesian well through, up into the pond, but I.
We haven't done this that far. The last time I spoke with our engineer, he didn't seem scared of what was going on.
It's not his money.
It only goes so far at night for me that there is a leak inside of that tunnel, and we all know that once water starts to pad, it doesn't stop.
But I, I guess that was what I had in my head, was that I gotta like Parker could come in and drill up into the pond.
I mean, it's, I don't think Parker does directional boring. Directional drilling.
More like an artesian well, I, but.
Without having engineer numbers, I, I would have a safe bet that you're looking at between quarter and a half a million dollars by the time it's all done, possibly. By the time an engineer gets their hands on it, the safety's their hands on it.
Yeah, you got two sixty-two.
Quarter of the way there.
No, I guess that goes to my point on the sewer side, that having a little nest egg isn't the worst thing. Okay.
Okay, I'll bring back some, I'll bring back some numbers and I'll bring back the rate sheet showing twenty thousand, thirty thousand, forty thousand dollars in reserve, and then what that's gonna do to the rate, so that way you have a clear idea of what that.
That works. Okay.
That's what we'll do.
Okay, and, and the stuff that keeps airing up at night on the sewer side, you know, things are still, have to be working, I mean.
Can we hit those? Do we have time to just run through those? Or do you?
I guess I'm asking, if, if Joe's gonna do something, I want him to sit with Aaron and say, put some of that stuff in. And tell us what, what it is.
So the items before the new plant is operational?
Yeah, how do we get from now until day five hundred?
Let's just make sure it's a sustainable budget. That's the directive.
Three percent is a solid place to start.
From me, yeah. I, I'm just one.
A three percent increase is always good, it covers potential increases and salaries.
Yeah, I don't really like percentages. I guess I'd prefer you guys just tell me the real things that need to be in there. You know what I mean?
So Joe, you're gonna bring those back?
Yeah, I'll bring some.
The twenty-ninth? Or a special meeting?
No, we're gonna, yeah, you guys, it's gonna take more than just one more meeting.
You better do a special.
Yes, it's worth doing new things, it's. History is.
So we'll review on the twenty-ninth, and then if we have to have a special meeting the first week of July or whatever to get the rate set before bills go out.
Do you wanna do it before?
I'd like to have one more because before July one, right?
I, I like it to be clean.
There's a high likelihood that I will not be here the first week of July, but if you guys, if I'm not here, just go ahead and do it.
You wanna do it on the sixteenth, the week of the sixteenth?
Is that June or July?
July?
June.
You wanna just move the fifteenth meeting to a different day?
Thursday, huh?
I can't do it. Wednesdays, Thursdays are tough.
Monday night?
Mondays, we can, we can, we have an EDC that I can.
Can't, can't you pull some strings, get the graduation?
Three in that week. Three graduations.
Let's just put it out, can we push it to the off week?
Sure.
The twenty-second?
Is it twenty-second?
Does that help?
That's good. I can do the off week.
Early.
Can we do it like five?
We'll start at like five-thirty.
Absolutely, we can do it early.
How many can I work? Five-thirty? It's an hour. We'll get you an hour.
It's my anniversary, so. Twenty-five.
Alright, we should pick a different day.
No, the date, no.
One day?
It's twenty.
Monday to twenty-first.
Seriously, that's a special day.
I know, I know, that's.
Twenty-first.
Good with that one? Twenty-first, yeah, that's the day before.
We can pick the twenty-first and then we can email, if that works. I don't know.
I'll get the paperwork ready, and, I mean, we don't have to post till the seventeenth.
The twenty-first at six o'clock, is that what you're saying, or seven o'clock?
Six o'clock's good.
Six o'clock.
Okay.
As long as Joe emails me.
Yeah, right.
Twenty-first at six o'clock.
Joe, when's our? Never mind, it's not that bad.
Alright, so Joe is gonna work up some different options, work there on a, on a list for the next year and a half, five hundred days, and come back to us on June twenty-first. And hopefully, we can either approve it then, or on the twenty-ninth. That works for everybody? Alright, moving on, parking lot. Anything needs to be updated there?
Just, just that we, we made a decision on, the alley closure's still there, we took that off, so that can go. And on the resident of the year, I met with the committee again, and there's no, no one who wants to take and run. The short story is, there's no one who wants to take and run with it, and it's really, it depends on having a good, active chamber, which we don't have. So, at, at this time, we gotta put effort into coming up with a version, that was a great, but we. Need the foundation, and, and nobody, nobody in the group who says that they're, they don't have the bandwidth to go and, and, and try to put something. Need the foundation and and nobody, nobody in the group says that they're, they don't have the bandwidth to go and 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 try to put something together with that.
Well, does anyone know what's up with the chamber? How could we get more active and?
I I have my, that's another whole agenda. I would think here, we're doing some research. I'm I'm underwhelmed with our
Yeah.
Valley chamber, quite frankly.
Yeah.
It doesn't, hasn't been active.
So we should table the resident of the year from the.
Yeah, I would, I would take it off as as well and not hold this accountable for.
All right. At the moment. That's why I said table it from the day, but we'll recircle back to that. Um, others? Board roundtable, anybody?
What's that project updates folded there, just sitting there? Is that what we were talking about earlier that we'd have it come back once a month or something?
Yeah, stuff like that and some of the dinner stuff.
Just kind of floating there.
Yeah, that was that Excel spreadsheet.
Yeah.
No, the only thing I had, Carol already mentioned the eighth, I won't be here. The twenty-ninth, I will be away, but I can call in. Maybe. I won't get as much trouble as Rod, but. So there's potential I won't be here the next two meetings, um, the fifteenth and the twenty-ninth. Just so you guys, in the week of the twentieth, I won't be in town. I'll be, I'll be out of town, so if anything comes up, just let me know. Anybody else for roundtable?
Just, just one, and see now I have here, the the potholes on Scott Hill are starting in the upper end uh by the Roberts place and through there. They're starting to get some depth again to them. Uh, I know it's a fill up, refill the patch, patch the patches and all that, but I, someone's.
Well, if you would drive around them.
I I try to.
I drive in the wrong lane. I'll be with my house.
My other concern up there on Scott Hill where the culverts were put in, it looks like after this winter, they're they're sinking. And we now have built-in speed bumps where the culverts were uh as well, so it's just, it's an ongoing, I know it's a battle that we are.
Culverts, one unknown Griffith Pond Road.
Is there?
Yeah, that's why I want to see it.
All right.
I meant to ask you in your report, but when we talked about paving, you mentioned airport road, how, and you're just paving from town to the bridge?
Yes.
Because there's a pretty bad spot right after that by the trailer park.
Yep.
Okay.
That's the, what we, I have.
It's just a money thing?
Yep, all money. Uh, swamp roads, like I said, all the roads except for furnace and union are patch or shimco only. So they're going to make the roads flat and black, but they're not going to be a structural overlay.
Yep. I didn't know if it'd be worth going the other way to cover that bad spot and then.
See now, yeah, they already had the, I I don't know when you talk to Pike whether I I agree. Were they already up there and to say, to bring them back for that little piece? What do we, is there something that we? I I don't know. You guys know what you're, know the paving, but.
I just thought I'd ask.
Yeah, same distance but shifted.
Yes.
Uh, so that's, and I think it's a little bit shorter, but you know, there's some other work that we probably possibly had planned for up on that end, hopefully to help with some of the issues too, but.
The ditching looks really good. That's got to help, right?
It does. Uh, I would really like to hit that water, move in and in somehow, but there's different techniques, the way to do it. And we just haven't sat down to thoroughly come up with a plan, what you think would be the best serve for the town, yeah.
Ultimately, it's up to you. I just wanted to.
I just want to know when you're going to ditch up on twenty-two A.
Up on twenty-two A? Be up tonight if you.
All right, uh, Jeff, review of financial records?
Motion to pay the payroll, uh, thirty-one thousand, one hundred twenty-nine dollars and twelve cents.
Second.
Uh, motion by Jeff to authorize a payroll warrant, uh, seconded by Glenn. Is there questions on that? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carries?
Motion to pay the general fund warrant, seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred nine dollars and fifty-two cents.
Second.
A motion by Jeff for the general fund warrant, seconded by Glenn. Um, questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries?
Five hundred fifty-three thousand, four hundred twenty dollars and seven cents in the checkbook.
You're going to have to repeat that, please.
He was quick on that.
Five fifty-three, four twenty, point oh seven.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Joe, is the thirty-one for payroll, is that the new norm because we hired someone?
It's close.
It's, yeah, it's always at the high twenties, low thirties.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying, twenty-seven to twenty-nine is is pretty typical, and it just, it wasn't big enough to really say anything. I just figured it's just, we hired someone new or.
No, I think it's the, there were some raises and that kicked in and.
No, uh, so no, there's no, maybe somebody got a little bit of overtime, um, but.
Significant overtime.
I mean, for one guy, it would be sure, but nothing, nothing out of the ordinary.
So it, that's not a new norm, because it's usually, since I've been on the board again, it's twenty-seven to twenty-nine.
The water plant now started today and then hopefully the rest of those starts.
Okay. That could kick it up.
The summer help.
Well, it could be the summer help.
Oh, yeah, it could be all the summer help.
There you go.
There'll be summer help.
All right.
Eighteen, twenty-nine, nine.
Was that twenty-nine, nine?
Yeah.
Twenty, I don't look at the change, I just look at it.
Um, executive session, is there a need for that still?
Fourth, twenty-nine, four.